Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting of September 30th, 2025, in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. If we could all please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing tonight, two matters on the agenda, and I know that there are a lot of people here to discuss the MBTA matter, but we would like to, with the board's consent, if all approve, to take the matter of Haley Shanis first, if people don't mind, to get them out of the way. Haley, you can come on up. So this would be on the application of Haley Shanis requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 290 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 74 Rochester Road in Carver, Mass., assesses map 92 lot 7-0 to operate a doggy daycare in the lower level of the home in a residential agricultural zoning district. Hi there.
Hello.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Mr. Bott, you may or may not be aware, but Ms. Sordillo and I were able to go out to the property over the weekend, as we did not meet the scheduled site visit on Thursday.
Yes, in the draft decision, it says Members Williams and Sordillo visited the site on September 28th.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure we confirmed that before.
We did. We were there at 2:30, and we were there for a while. Yes. Were there any comments from the board members that attended the site visit, or concerns?
Railings on the stairs. There should be railings on the basement stairs. If there's dogs and leashes, it could be chaos.
Yeah.
I think you said that you were working on those anyway. You were working on the stairs.
Mike, closer, please. Thank you. The indoor basement, the basement stairs?
Yeah, the stairs from your kitchen to your basement?
Yes, there's a railing on them. It might have not been.
It wasn't in at the time.
It might have not been at the time.
There was one Sunday, Mr. Shea.
Excellent.
On the left, yeah.
He was still finishing the drywall.
That was my biggest concern.
Yes, there was one.
That's my only concern.
That's it, okay. Anyone else have any comments?
Thought she did a great job.
Thank you.
And Dad did a good job, too.
Yes, yeah, very good. Whereas this is a public hearing, would anyone in the public like to comment on this matter? All right, seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
One second now.
Mr. Lake?
Says I.
Kevin Robinson says I.
Mr. Shea says I.
Ellen Sordillo says I.
Mary Ellen Williams says I. Very good. Any other matters to speak about on this, the board?
We should discuss how many dogs she can have in overnight boarding.
Okay, all right.
Two is...I mean, currently, it's at one, so I think she's shown that she's responsible with all, and two would be fine with me.
Okay, very good.
I think she was requesting three.
How much, how many were you requesting?
Um, three would be ideal, but I can work with two.
You have two dogs currently?
I do.
Okay. I'm fine with three, but it should only be two dogs out under supervision at night after, say, 8 o'clock.
All right, very good.
The neighbors and such.
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, 100%.
Perfect.
So overnight boarding is limited to three dogs. And you'll note in the draft decision, I put in your packet, I also included the previous conditions.
Okay.
When the, well, with the approval for nine island ponds, island farm.
All right.
And so I incorporated many of those conditions into the draft decision here.
All right.
So those conditions, if I may.
Please.
A true copy of this recorded decision will be registered, registered if the Plymouth County Registry approves, the applicant should comply with Section 61A, Rules and Regulations for Controlled Dogs, contained in the Town's General Bylaw. Operating hours are from Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Weekends by appointment, only for dogs, only for boarding, drop-off, and pickup. The maximum number of dogs per facility is 10. Condition number five, overnight boarding is limited to one dog at that time, that's from the old previous conditions, so three dogs. But overnight boarding is infrequent and may include Saturday. Condition number six, the applicant shall provide contact information, Animal Control Officer, for any complaints about nuisance barking. The applicant also agreed to provide contact information to their neighbors. Seven, dog waste will be picked up immediately in a biodegradable bag sprayed with veterinary grade disinfectant and placed in a closed metal deodorized can. A waste will be disposed of twice a week. The approximately 2,700 square foot fence, square foot fence in play area will be sanitized regularly. And number eight, all dogs must be properly licensed by their home communities, and such information must be available to the Animal Control Officer upon request. Condition number nine, vaccination records for dogs shall be submitted to the operator prior to the dogs being accepted at a facility. Such records should be made available to the Animal Control Officer upon request. Condition number 10, Carver Fire Department requires smoke and carbon monoxide installed in accordance with the code. Installation of fire extinguishers, a written procedure for disaster slash emergency management according to NFPA 150A 43421. An inspection of the premises to evaluate life safety. And condition number 11, this permit shall run with the applicant only and should be void if the applicant does not reside in this location.
Very good.
Condition number 12 is after 8:00 p.m., only two dogs at a time outside under supervision.
Is that what the board decided?
What was that again?
After 8:00 p.m., two dogs at a time under supervision.
Oh, that's right. After 8:00 p.m.
Only two dogs.
Only two.
Outside. And under supervision?
Yes, so that the neighbors aren't disturbed.
Kind of reflects my amazing typing skills for everybody in the viewing audience here. This is why I don't work with dogs, because they're further forgiving, but they would be missed with that. All right, so condition number 12, after 8:00 p.m., only two dogs. Outside and under supervision. All right?
Very good. Any other comments?
Motion.
No, okay.
To approve, if it's acceptable.
Very good.
I will make the motion to approve the application of Haley Shanis requesting a special permit located at 74 Rochester Road to operate a doggy daycare in the lower level of the home in a residential agricultural district.
One second now, motion.
Very good. Mr. Lake?
Says I.
Kevin Robinson says I.
Mr. Shea says I.
Ellen Sordillo says I.
Mary Ellen Williams says I. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to have a printed copy of the decision for the board to sign tonight, so we can get it filed as well.
Okay, perfect.
So just don't head out too quickly after we're done here.
Very good. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, we have the public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Carver zoning bylaw and zoning map to establish a new article, 4-13, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. The proposed multifamily overlay district is intended to comply with requirements of General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 3A, commonly known as the MBTA Communities Law.
All right. So we have a couple things I haven't touched the bylaw much, because I want Judy to come back with changes we might have anticipated. But amongst those that I have incorporated into the bylaw, based on conversations I've had with what the board had mentioned, and discussions with the Carver Fire Department regarding building height. So the draft bylaw right now really only has three changes to it, that being the maximum height of the building. So in Section 294, 13.5, it had previously been 45 feet. With, on consultation with the Carver Fire Department, they quite adamantly said 35 feet. There are other places in town where 40 feet is an approved height, but as the Fire Department pointed out to me, none of those bylaw changes were done in consultation with the Carver Fire Department. So we asked, and they said 35 feet. We did hear back, we did hear from Judy that that might create some kerfuffle with the Commonwealth, but it's your bylaw, and the Fire Department said 35 feet.
Well, if they would like to help us with that situation, then that might, might assist.
Well, just circling back around to what we had previously discussed, so 35 feet is one of the changes in the height, three stories, maximum height of 35 feet. In having the discussion with the building commissioner about building height, because I had originally said, I think it's typically about 11 foot per story. He says, well, it's for commercial. For residential, you might get 10 feet per floor. He goes, but the difference between how Carver measures height and other places, in Carver, they measure the height from the ridge of the building, ridge of the roof. Many other communities measure the distance, the height of the roof, the height of a building, from the center line, from basically the top plate to the roof. So it's basically about halfway up the roof where the height of the building is.
Okay.
So Carver's bylaw says 35 feet at the top, at the top ridge of the building. So 35 feet is in there. The other two changes plugged into the bylaw were regarding setbacks around wetlands. So in Section 294, 13.7, Site Development Standards, we have added a line seven, no parking will, shall be within 100 foot of a wetland area. And similarly with the buildings under Section 8, no building shall be within 100 foot of a wetland area. So those are the only two changes that I had made to the bylaw.
Okay.
We did have some discussion, and I believe I forwarded the board the latest calculations that Barrett Company put together on the capacity for 32 West Street. And that gets a bit surprising. I thought, well, I was surprised at option one and option two.
Surprised is an understatement, I would have to say.
So, so in Judy's email, to meet these minimum requirements, the smaller, the multifamily districts must provide for 40 dwelling units per acre, and the larger one, at least 25 units per acre. Either way, the zone capacity ends up in the high 400s, because, well, math is math. For the record, Lilly experimented with dropping the maximum height to two stories. It brings the zone capacity down to 280-something, but the density drops to 11 units per acre, so reducing the height in stories isn't an option. So it needs to be three stories, whether that be 35 feet, as we have proposed. The open space district, one, which is about 19.28 acres at the front part of the district, and let's bring up the map. Yes, I'm a human. I have this trouble, I probably have mentioned it before, when the internet says, "Prove you're not a bot." And I have to explain to them that.
You are.
I am a bot, born and raised. So the 19.2 acres of the housing district would be at the front part of the parcel, as we've talked about before, and the remaining 33.15 acres would be the open space district in the back. That has a maximum allowable density of 25 dwelling units per acre, with a modeled capacity of 482 units. And Judy had said, I think we can get it down to 200 or 300, but that's not what we saw here. So the other question I had asked, well, we'll consult with the board, is the board wants to stay with this particular district, or do they want to consider the merits of switching to One Meadowbrook? So with that said, I think what the board decided that they liked about this site was the, the difficulty of developing the site and the likelihood of someone actually pulling the trigger on that. So with that in mind, if the board wants to stick with that particular strategy of sticking with this site, then we have a site that has, complies with the bylaw, that may or may not be used, but has a potential build-out capacity of 482 units if someone figures out how to get water and sewer and everything else to the site.
I find that to be completely unacceptable.
Well, and I looked at the, the numbers that came with that, because in one of the other discussions that was in the email that I had sent about perhaps tweaking the, a district at Meadowbrook in order to get down to a lower capacity with a 75% open space ratio, and Judy had mentioned, you know, that may become a problem with, with EOHLC. And looking at those things, but when we look at the actual numbers of these percentages, under option one, 37% of the district is for housing, and 63% is for open space. The other option was, and it really doesn't net much of a difference as far as the, as far as the total model capacity, that was 23% of the district and 77% for open space. So that sort of parallels, and I don't know if Judy and Lilly had this conversation before, you know, Lilly put those numbers together. But if 75% of an open space district is going to prove problematic, then we're likely better to stick with option one, we're at 19%. And I think more importantly, the maximum overall density for option one is 25 units per acre, as opposed to option two, which has an overall density of 25 units per acre. And I know those are both among that capacity, but I went back and watched the tape from the meeting we had at the police station, and the tape meeting we had here, and she kept emphasizing over and over that the model has inputs, and you have to try to tweak those, and we're constrained to some bit by the model.
Well, I'm a little frustrated with that, Mr. Bott, because she's the one that designed that program, or assisted to design that program. She assured us that we could make the other part of the property open space, and we were adamant about the 235 units. So for her to say that she was lacking direction, I don't know where that's coming from, but we were all very clear about, A, having a problem with 235, and certainly wouldn't, we would not want to exceed 235. So to know that we're not looking at, you know, something in the range of 400, that, no. I don't care where it is. I don't care if it's Ferraris or anywhere else. That's not acceptable. So we have to go back to the drawing board here, because, you know, we were advised to trust our consultant, and at this point in time, I don't trust anything that she has told us. Because I find it mostly to be false.
So for clarity, Judy worked for RKG, but she didn't write, she did not put this program together, the company, it's a large company across the country.
Yeah, but she's very familiar with it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So she knew exactly what she was doing when she plugged these numbers in.
So the option for the board at this point is, does the board want to stick with the district that we have been discussing, and look at if there is another parameter, can they shrink that more? And I would venture to say, if they could, they would, because that's what we asked them to do.
Right.
So the question to the board is, do we want to continue looking at the 30, 32 West Street as potential property, or do we want to consider toggling over to One Meadowbrook? Where I think what I heard from, so in One Meadowbrook, at the time, we had a yield of 304 units and a gross density of 25 units. As Lilly pointed out, if you increase that open space requirement to 75%, the model capacity would be 247 units. If that seemed problematic to them, and we've already talked about the height of the building might be problematic, then, you know, why not move forward with the bylaw that's going to have two problematic things in it versus one? So does the board want to stick with the idea that no one's likely to develop in the junkyard, or do we want to look at switching over to One Meadowbrook and have her retool the zoning for that? Because as she said, each zoning bylaw is written based on the characteristics of the land that are there.
My, my question is, why is 25% problematic?
I don't know.
It's not outlined in, in the law, so I don't, they didn't, the law itself doesn't give a requirement for that, so I didn't know.
No, and oftentimes, a law is written, and then regulations are put together before them, and those, and that was one of the issues that the, that the courts took issue with, is they didn't promulgate proper regulations. So you write a law, and regulations help to implement the law. So I don't know either.
And what was the number per acre on the Meadowbrook property?
20.0, I put a line through, it's either 20.0 or 20.8 units per acre.
And if we brought that down to 19.08, that would bring that down to 240?
Yeah, so it says if we, if you increase it to 75%, the model capacity would be 247, 20.8 units per acre.
And if we put the density at 19.8, that would bring it down to 239?
As you know, because I tried to just put this kind of math into a spreadsheet without having the benefit of whatever the model is, because I have not worked the compliance model and the GIS analysis for that. Sometimes the simple math we think works, doesn't. But, you know, if, if our target is, let's look at 75% or a maximum of 75% of that open space requirement, and targeting a, a density under 20, we can see where that comes back at.
Does the state own Meadowbrook Way?
No, the Carver Housing Authority does. So it's different from the state-owned properties, like the highway areas and things like that, because the state itself owns that. But in this, and we've talked about this a few times, and at no point did Barrett Planning say, "No, you cannot do that on a housing authority side." She made some caveats. Was it identified in a, in a housing production plan or something like that? But at no point has anyone said, "You absolutely cannot put it on One Meadowbrook." It was just a question of the ambiguity, ambiguity, can you or can you not?
Now, when we talk about Meadowbrook, it's, does it include any of the public buildings? Does it include the police station, the library?
No, I think it is just the Meadowbrook parcel. So Meadowbrook was 18.97 acres, 11.9 developable. But keep in mind, as we found out, the larger the district is, the more problematic it gets getting that, you have a number to where you'd like it at. So I think it's best to keep it tailored to that site as tightly as we can, just to make sure we don't have another problem trying to.
Well, it's unfortunate if she had just given us a number to target for acreage and not misled us by saying that any overage could be considered open space, we probably wouldn't have delayed this as long.
Well, we started talking about it in December, and we started talking about it again in July. So we're just under the gun of trying to compress this process, and, and, as you can see, a complex and.
Well, no, I mean, she said that, she said at the August 26th meeting, that she would be able to secure a certain area for open space, and I think you had said that we would put the front, you know, the dwellings in the front of the property, closest to West Street, and, you know, in addition to the parking, but then the back would be considered open space. Now, that's, she has flipped the script on that, and so.
Well, it would still be that scenario, but the numbers are just larger than we were anticipating.
So you're using more space, is my point. Because if we were looking at 235 units, you're now taking that amount of area and expanding it to get the 400 units. So that's taken away from the open space, when I didn't realize that that was a moving target.
Well, like I said, it's, it's.
No, but ideally, it would have been nice if she said, you know, you should probably focus on maybe, you know, 10 acres or something like that, because we were misled.
Yeah, and I don't have, and I don't know that you were misled. That's your characterization, but that's fine.
Um, no, I was misled, because.
But there's certainly, there's certainly some.
I would never have voted for a property of that size, knowing that she came up with 839 units last week. I never would have made that suggestion. Granted, I made the suggestion, and I think Mr. Shea did as well, to look at that property because of the challenges that people would have. But God forbid, if somebody came in there and was able to clean that up, maybe the state would even assist them clean it up. But that's a whole heck of a lot of units in there that Carver cannot take on that burden.
Absolutely.
So we need to get this down to a smaller area, and is our, is our only option at this point Meadowbrook? Or can we go back to our original suggestions?
So, I, well, I asked that question. Could you turn that around? And she seemed to think that that was a non-issue, because the modeling had already been done. I think that the direction we would like to give to Barrett Company is, get the number at this site down to 250-ish, or we're going to flop to One Meadow. If you can't get us down to a reasonable number.
Now, what assurance do we have that they wouldn't, and I say they, being the state, allow further development to go in the open space area? Once it's, I mean, because the state, obviously, they can do anything they want, because they're trying to do that now. So if we designate a certain percentage of that parcel as open space, we have absolutely zero assurance that they are not going to come in at some point in time and say, "Nope, you can develop that now."
Well, based on what I know about zoning, the line is where the line is at. The only people who can move that line is town meeting.
Yeah.
Which is why the state just didn't create this zoning for every community. They said towns have to create the zoning at their town meeting. So I think the only way, as I, my understanding of zoning, the only way that line could move is if somebody went to the ZBA and said to the ZBA, "We'd like a variance. We'd like an expansion to change the line." But the line is going to be the line, and that's the area they can develop within.
Based on the numbers the state uses, if we did have 480 or 490, 479 new units, which is double what they say we have to zone for, that would be a 10% increase in population of the town theoretically. A 10%. Not people, not units. That's humongous. Is there any vector to simply put in the zoning bylaw that insofar as this is being done at the behest of the state, and our requirement is to create at least 235 units, we're going to cap it at that?
Yeah, they've already shot down, state's already shot down capping the number of units on a site.
Not only have they shot down capping the units at the site, they've also left it unlimited to the amount of occupants in each dwelling, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was actually town council had pointed that out to us. So, so I guess the question for the board is, do we want to give Barrett Company that instruction to either get 30 to 32 West Street down to a number approaching 250? Because we said the model, you can't quite crank out an exact number, or flip to One Meadow, One Meadowbrook Way?
Or Spring Street.
That was, that was a smaller area, right?
Yes.
That was a smaller area.
Yes, Spring Street had 227 as, as. Yes, Spring Street had 227 as a yield there.
Yeah, you could add one more property, less than an acre.
Well, there isn't another property around it, I don't think. It's... Well, you could borrow somebody else's yard, I guess, to add to that as well.
Well, there's a property with what could be construed as an emergency access down to High Street there that would fit the bill quite nicely.
Will they look at that?
Sure. You can...
I'd like to see the potential for both as described.
So Meadowbrook, so 30 to 32 West Street, drop yield to 250 or less. Or look at Meadowbrook or Spring Street.
See, I don't think they can get West Street down to that, because I think we made it as clear as we possibly could.
I... Yeah, I would almost be in the position that we take West Street off the table right now, given the fact that this is... It's forever moving.
Well, while you've got a hearing open... Obviously, you've got a hearing open, so you can make that decision next week as well.
Right.
See what the numbers come out.
No, it's just my suggestion.
At this point, I think you want to have all the flexibility you can, considering we've got town...
No, I know. I'm just not feeling like I can trust the outcome for that.
Maybe we should...
We take... Yeah.
Yeah. No. Does the board have any comments they would like to make?
I'm just curious.
No, I think that if... I mean, getting down to that number, I don't... I think... I think she would have done it if she could have. Honestly, we couldn't have been clearer on West Street, and I don't... I don't see that that numbers... That line's really going to change. So, I would like to see the build-out on the other two properties.
Okay.
I'm curious to see what everybody has to say.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Oh, it's going to be good.
I can imagine.
So, Mr. Bott, so we're going to revisit the numbers?
Yeah, so I've got Meadowbrook, 3032, dropped to 250 or less. Or look at One Meadow and Spring Street.
Okay.
And because of the time we've got, she's going to be creating a map and zoning for both of those districts. Because we won't have time to have a big discussion about it.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, if there's no other comments from the board, whereas this is a public hearing, if there's anyone, I see them lined up.
Get in line.
All right. All right. You can sit side by side. So, RKG...
Donna, if you could just...
Oh, Donna Foran, 278 South Meadow Village. So, RKG wrote the software that Judy is using. Is there any possibility that there's another software that she can use other than RKG software that might produce the... What you're looking for, for West Street? Just curious. And I just think it's appalling to come before here. You've been working with Judy since August, and for this to happen like this, and she... I was at that meeting when she said she could turn it around and do it. And obviously, it's not working. And here you are all doing basically... You're all doing her work. And it's not right, and it shouldn't be that way. And for Mr. Bott to sit here and say, you know, every week that, "Oh, it's not going to work. It's not going to work." That's... Enough is enough. Thank you again for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Sarah Hewens, 52 Forest Street. Through you to Mr. Bott. I'm not sure how... If this will help, but my question is, the board was talking about not being able to ensure that the open space stayed open in perpetuity. Can't the town request that they put an open space restriction on the property?
Yeah, that's typical what happens with a development that has an open space. There's a conservation restriction on it or someone holds...
Yeah, a conservation restriction.
Yeah.
Is it within the board's authority?
Yeah, I would think so. I guess the interesting thing about this particular open space, when you look at giving open space to a nonprofit organization like Wildlands Trust, Western State Coalition, who's going to want an open space to monitor in a junkyard?
Well...
So, I think finding someone to hold that restriction.
So, it could be given... It could be given to the... In the care and custody of the Carver Conservation Commission. Another entity would have to hold the restriction. The town can't hold its own restriction. But if another entity understands why we want to do that, I would think they would do it.
Yeah, every development that we've done with an open space component to it, that's been a requirement that there's a conservation restriction on it, and some...
Yeah, I mean, as long...
...organization holds that non... Or that conservation restriction.
As long as the Conservation Commission's willing to be... Have it in their care and custody, it then belongs to the town. But another entity holds the restriction, and that's forever.
No, I understand that, Ms. Hewens. But my concern is there were some statements made...
Oh, no, I understand. And I'm not... I don't like this project either, no matter where it is. But I'm suggesting that wherever it is, if you want to preserve the open space...
Right.
You were concerned that that might not stay that way forever.
Right.
And I was just offering a solution.
No, I appreciate that. I just... I'm a little frustrated, because what I initially thought was going to be open space now is not.
I get that. Yeah. Gotcha.
Decreased substantially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Foran, 20 Brook Street, North Carver. My concern is that I've heard several times that Judy is saying she's had a lack of direction. I think it's been very clear that the board has been very clear on what their direction is. There seems to be some sort of disconnect. Once the board says their piece, that disconnect seems to be very loud over towards Judy or very quiet. I would actually recommend this board take a vote of no confidence in the town planner. He gets paid the big bucks, and it's clear that he is not advocating for the people of Carver, and the decisions he's made could drastically affect the taxpayers, drastically affect this town. From 835 units, down to 200 and something units. Now, we're back up to 480 units. And you want a grassroots effort to be involved in this? And what do we got now? Seven days? And we have zero answers going into seven days? I think that directly falls on the town planner, and I would ask any one of you members to take a vote of... Motion to take a vote of no confidence for the town planner. Thank you.
Thank you.
One here, I thought I was going to be the only ugly one at the table tonight. Ellen Germain, 24 Pine Street. And I'm coming to you tonight, not as the town moderator. I do not vote next Tuesday. I am incensed. How dare you, sir?
Please, please keep your tone.
Take this much time to get this into a discussion when we've known this was coming for over two years. You told me a year and a half ago, to my face, sir, you didn't want this ever to come to town meeting. And I said, "You want us to lose by default?"
Can you please direct all comments...
This is how I talk.
...comments to the Madam Chair?
I am. You're going through her to the town planner. This is abhorrent, what is going on here. We were told 200 units, 400 units, 800 units, Meadowbrook Way. How much more traffic we want coming out of these side streets? What are we going to do about the schools? What are we going to do about the public safety infrastructure? His attitude of no one's going to come and build this stuff, I think that Representative Gasky just informed me that the state's now coming up with funding to pay these developers to put in sewer treatment plants and water systems. So, believe me, that falls on deaf ears. You zone it, they'll build it. Because the state, when they're not happy, will come up with something else to do for these developers, just like they inundated us with solar and they're inundating us with windmills. And then, when the money runs out, all these places all go to hell, because there's no money left in there to support them. This is ridiculous on every level. The state needs to be told, "Get out." They don't like that. You know what? Keep your grants. We don't need your money. They can't stop the school money. They can't stop the road money, and they can't stop the public safety money, and they can't stop the federal money. They want to dangle more carrots, dangle them. Do it somewhere else. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the support. There's no MBTA in the town. We're an adjacent, small town. You can't even get a cab in this town. There is no bus service. You've got to call an Uber. So, where are these people going to go? We're going to have multiple families. They're all going to have two cars. We're already at capacity for the elementary school. We are at septic capacity for the middle high school. So, the next thing to come down the road will be, "Hey, we need a new high school. Hey, we need to add on to the middle school. Hey, we're dealing with old colony. That could be $4, $4.5 million a year we're going to have to do to support old colony." And that's going to pass. So, now, we're going to add this nonsense on top of it. This is ridiculous. And yes, I have more notes. The question I have for you, if this is approved at town meeting, hypothetically, God forbid, we are deemed to willfully accept the MBTA Communities Act. We have voted at town meeting. The vote was yes. We have now willfully accepted this debacle. Mary Ann is correct. The state can come in tomorrow and say, "Yeah, you know what? That open space, nah, you can put more houses there." We're subject... I don't even believe you could put a conservation restriction on the land, because it would be, "We accepted this area as the MBTA community zoning area." State can say, "Yeah, we don't need that over there. You've got plenty of other open space. You can build this out." Also, how many times have they changed the law as it is? This thing's been around, and they keep on changing it and changing it and changing it. Started off with three grants you weren't going to get. Now, we're up to like 11.
Right.
They keep on moving the goalpost. We say yes, and then two years from now, there's a new goalpost. And then, they decide, "You know what? That wasn't big enough. You already accepted this. Now, we need another second location, and you're going to have to zone for that. And don't make us do it for you, because we will. Because you willfully accepted this at town meeting." This needs to be told, "No." This is a disgrace that it is coming before this honorable board by the town planner seven days before a special town meeting, and you're now talking about changing the location, having somebody plug new numbers into a computer system? And when is the public going to be informed at that? At town meeting?
Likely.
That's ridiculous. This should have been done long before now. And I am in agreement with Dan Foran. There should be a no confidence vote to this gentleman from the planning department. Honestly and truly, if it were up to me, I'd show him the door.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Tim Clancy, 10 Spring Street Extension. I'm kind of curious as to... Again, I've been here, resident, 28 years. My wife and I lived up there. So, what happens if they want to develop that? Do I lose my house?
No.
I don't... This is why I'm here. I'm trying to understand.
It's what's considered an overlay district. In other words, like many parts of the town, residential agriculture is the underlying district. And then, we have commercial. We have industrial. We have marijuana districts. They're all just districts put on top of each other. Nobody's going to take your land. The town will not take it by eminent domain, as far as I know.
But I mean, the state could if they were developing.
State, I don't know that...
I don't believe that's...
The state really could come in here and take it by eminent domain. Unless you sell your house, it cannot be used for that. That's really the bottom line.
Yeah, because I thought the whole idea of... Or at least, the planning of this was to get the zoning. So, down the line, if they want...
Well, the state...
Somebody wants to come in and develop, if they can, and, you know, you're kind of out the door, kind of speak.
The state figures that either a developer is going to offer you enough money to walk away, or they'll just wait till the next person owns your house, and then they'll offer them enough money for them to walk away. And that's the long game the state plays.
You know, because again, going back to what the planner said, developing 32 West Street, I get that part of it, where the town wouldn't be on the hook for cleaning it up and that sort of thing. But it came to my attention about a month ago from a neighbor going, "Hey, did you see what's going on with our street?" We had... I've been there 28 years. I had no idea that this was even a thing until somebody brought it to my attention. And then, I'm thinking to myself, "I've been here almost 30 years. We busted our ass to get that house the way it is." And then, now, somebody just decides, "Hey, we're going to zone this. We're not going to..."
Well, just to clarify, zoning doesn't empower anybody to do anything unless they own the property. It's up to the owner of the property to attempt to make a use that's within the zoning. So, if you decide to do that, if you own the property and buy adjacent properties, decide to build high-density housing, and it's zoned under the MBTA zoning law, you can do it. If somebody comes to you and says, "Hey, what's your house worth? $800,000? I'll give you $3 million for it." You might say, "Yeah, I would." You know? Then, if it's in the areas that's zoned, they can build on it. But zoning is just, at this point, conjectural.
I mean, it just... If it seems like a great thing, everybody seems to be opposed of, you know, having it here or having it there. And they don't want it in their backyard. Neither do I. You know, I guess I just don't understand why my area is being looked at. I guess I kind of... Let me back up a little bit. I guess I understand why it's being looked at, because it's up in North Carolina. Nobody really cares about that area. It's close to the highway. I get it. It's not in the center of town. But, I mean, we've dealt with Route 44 coming through, the whole Ricketts Pond debacle over there, and now, we're looking at zoning of this. And I'm like, "Where does this end?" And it just seems to me that I just keep hearing more and more stories. And it's just like, "Yeah, I'd like to believe nobody's going to develop that, and I'd like to believe that somebody coming... Going to offer me $3 million for it." But that just isn't the case. I don't believe that that's true. You know, I just... I can't wrap my head around the fact that we're going to possibly displace families there when there's other areas of the town that they could look at.
We wouldn't be displacing any families unless they... Unless you or your neighbors chose to sell your homes. It's not like Mr. Shea was trying to explain. It's creating an overlay district, a zoning overlay district. So, that means that if you... If there were 10 different houses in this particular overlay district and everyone agreed to sell, and I hope that not one of you would ever agree to sell if that's the location, then you could name your price. The developer would come in and he would be able to develop these apartment-style buildings to accommodate the requests from the state. But trust and believe, none of us want this to happen in this town.
No, I fully am.
It doesn't matter if it's north, south, center. We don't want it anywhere.
Yeah. I just... I'm just trying to figure out why was that area chosen?
I think it was suggested because of the location to the highway, and it wasn't on the other side, you know, where all the accidents are happening. If... Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what the thought process was. It was closer to the highway, and it wasn't like in the intersection where some other suggested locations were.
And to be honest with you, I live in North Carver. And yes, North Carver tends to be the dumping ground for all the projects that the rest of Carver doesn't want.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've been there 28 years. We knew 44 was coming through.
I've been there, yeah. I've been there for over 20 years myself, so I'm well familiar with it. But I took a very long, hard look at the town of Carver and where it could be. And the best I could come up with was six suggestions, and the board pared it down to three. So, hours. I can't tell you the countless hours I spent looking for this. And, I mean, we've discussed other properties, too. It's just a big part of what my thinking is, location to the highway and maintaining the rural character of the town are two of the biggest aspects that I'm looking for. We don't want to displace anybody. I'm not in favor of this at all. I think it's an overreach for the state, and I find it very difficult to believe. So, what it comes down to is town meeting. So what it comes down to is town meeting. The state cannot force you to vote for or against anything. All they can do is hold the character of the stick. And currently, the court says, all they can do is withhold grants and take you to court over. That's where we're going to be. That's the threat that we, but we, as a planning board, is our responsibility to come up with the best plan we can come up with. And when you're dealing with something like this, there's no really good plan for this.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out the direct impact it's going to have on my wife and I, but you know, again, we've been there almost 30 years, so.
I live the next street over from here.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with the area, and yeah, I don't like it. I didn't like proposing it up there. But again, pulling it away from, what if they dropped it, you know, at the Plymouth Street extension there? We lose a grocery store because the grocery store will up and move back to where it was 10 years ago. That wasn't any big move for them then. It wouldn't be any move for them to do it again, or even to pull out of this town. They say it's underperforming, we don't need it anymore. And then where are the residents of the town of Carver looking at to get their groceries or, you know, their medicines or the various other aspects? And of course, your property tax is going to go up from this, but if it's put on commercial property, we lose that as a balancing point against this kind of development. As a planning board, we're supposed to prepare for long-term, consistent growth and development. And this is just throwing a pickaxe in the middle of that for us.
Yeah, I know. This has been a long road because it's, you guys have been back and forth and back and forth. And I mean, I don't know what's to expect next week, but I mean, we'll tell next week, I guess.
Come on back. We love to have people here voicing their opinions.
I mean, I'd love to stay in Carver. That's, we've been here for 30 years, but this might be a game changer for us, so.
Well, it's important that everyone gets out and votes next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, yeah.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And just, and understand that if we come up, we have to as a board, come up with an area, agree on an area, that doesn't mean that we support that, but we're checking a box of the responsibility that we have. And we all have our own voting rights as well here, and we'll be voting however we want to.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
No, thank you.
You know, I honestly wish that Mara Healy would come here, look at the town, and, you know, make a decision then.
Good evening, Representative Gasky.
So I came up just to sit down, just to, more than anything else, just to kind of clarify some of the stuff that I've heard regarding this, and to answer any questions that you guys have that I might be able to answer.
Thank you.
With regards to the grants that are on the table, Mr. Germain is correct. The grants that are in effect are, and there's no guarantees that we lose the grant. It just becomes part of the decision process of whether or not we're in compliance. So what's off the table for discussion? The schools, roads, and public safety. So any of that stuff that we're worried about, that's, from my understanding, that's the main crux of what Carver gets anyways, because the lion's share of all the grants are focused more for inner-city type living and setting up, trying to set up parks where parks don't exist, and different things like that. One of the things to remember also is the reason that we're here going through this struggle session is because of the Massachusetts Constitution. Article 89 prevents the state from creating zones. They cannot create zoning. So this is why the state is pushing all the towns to create the zoning that they want to see. So I don't know if, the one thing I don't know is if the zoning has to be on an entire parcel. I'm guessing that this is one entire complete parcel?
That is 3032 West Street, yes.
Okay. So I don't know if the zoning is allowed, if a parcel is allowed to be partially zoned for any of this.
We were told, no. We were told you can't, it's not good to split a parcel into two different zonings and that it wouldn't be accepted.
It was explained to us that it could be a district and a sub-district.
Yeah.
But you can't zone part of a parcel.
Right, right. So that's the biggest question on all of this. But if you have an area that is zoned where it cannot house in such a way that it cannot house the high-density housing, the state cannot come in and just take it. However, Mr. Bott bringing up that somebody being able to request a variance, the locals could make changes. On that, they are, they have already approved funding for building water systems, like, who is it? EEA has the authority to go in, and once it's requested, and once the zoning is there, and once it's requested by a developer or anybody else is saying, hey, we would love to build right here, but we don't have anything here. They've already started giving money, Wareham and Middleborough has already started getting money for, to upgrade and develop their water systems further, as well as their sewage systems. So the money is there, and they're willing to spend it. So as far as the resources needed to put the housing where we zone it, it's going to be made available. On top of that, we also have, what's coming down the road is the Mass Ready Act. We've already had several hearings on that, and within the Mass Ready Act is streamlining for preferred projects. Right now, high-density housing is a preferred project. And they're talking about using, taking the second right of refusal for a property that's coming out of Chapter 61. So with regards to land and forestry, farming, and general conservation, if somebody wants to bring it up out of that Chapter 61, and the town turns down, does not exercise that right, and gives up the property for a developer, the state can come through and say, we'll take that land if you're going to send it over to conservation.
They'll buy it.
What's that?
They'll buy it.
Yes.
I don't want to ensure, you said take. I don't want to ensure that.
Right, right. They will.
They'll match a bona fide offer.
They'll exercise their right.
I didn't want anybody to get the impression this state was taking it.
Yeah. And within that, part of that exercise, and part of that decision-making process is to work with Housing and Livable Communities, as well as Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, sorry, to determine how to use the property. So there is, there are other things that are being worked around to fund these projects. And the high, the preferred projects are also being streamlined for approval with regards to the court system and stuff like that. They go directly up to the highest court, get their decision, and come back. However, that is affecting. That's kind of the gist of what we have right now.
All right.
Is there any current bills or anything in the pipeline to help alleviate small rural communities, agricultural communities? I mean, the state says, we want local farms, we want farming.
Right.
But I've read the Mass Ready Act, and what it's saying is that they're going to buy that up and turn it into housing. So I mean.
And yes. And I had, I've had a discussion with the undersecretary at EEA, and I brought that exact topic up with regards to farms and locating a potential high-density, you know, preferred project right next to, say, one of the bogs, and the water requirements that that would entail, as well as the sewage runoff and things like that. And she, I, she basically said that they will take care of that. It won't be a problem.
And no offense to you, Mr. Gasky, but when the government knocks on the door and offers to help, I'm not going to accept it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, of course.
This is a government that never done it before.
Right. So, yeah, so when they decide to come in with a preferred project, they will make it happen.
Because we're already considered suburb of Boston. We're not even considered the small New England rural agricultural town. We're now part of Boston at this point for all intents and purposes. Except Boston, I understand, is exempt from the MBTA zoning by law.
Well, they're exempt from creating the overlays simply because they, and we're talking Boston proper, because all the areas around there still have to create it. As a matter of fact, the town of Winthrop is actually going, looking to go back to town meeting and reject the zoning because the state is coming in and developers are coming in, and it's not going well for the town.
Well, I lived in Winthrop for a couple of years, and there's just, it's packed, densely packed with working-class houses, usually three residences to a house, and there's just not a whole lot of room to put anything like that in.
Yep. And they're trying to take what little there is, they're trying to take it up with. Yep.
So Mr. Gasky, just to confirm, and I just want everyone to hear this, the grants that won't be withheld from us would be schools, emergency services.
Correct.
And roads.
Correct.
Because I think there are some people in the community that are concerned that they might be affected by that. So I thank you very much for coming forward and confirming that, because that may affect their decision moving forward or for next week, to know that their particular grants that they're afraid of losing, they won't be in jeopardy.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
May I put a plug in for town meeting, please?
Yes, please, Mr. Germain.
I'm the town moderator, for those who don't know. So town meeting starts at 6:30. The auditorium holds 600 people. We have 600 clickers. So everybody that is in the auditorium will have a clicker. Actually, you can go to 601 because I don't get one.
Correct.
So you'll be able to vote in the auditorium with the electronic clickers. We're going to set up for a potential overflow room of the middle high school cafeteria. That will have a remote set up in there, but they will be voting by either voice count or by card count, and there'll be counters in that room if should it be necessary. There'll be an assistant moderator in that room, and the comments will go back and forth between the auditorium and the overflow room. And that means that if there's 10 people in the overflow room, they will have the same opportunities to speak as the 600 in the auditorium. For those that have come to town meeting before, I think I've shown that I'm very fair. I look at both sides. I'm unbiased, and I'll offer no opinion. This is the only opinion you're going to get out of me tonight is at this meeting. What happens next Tuesday is entirely up to the town. So 6:30, we have it up on four marquees in the town, both schools, the fire department, and there's a signboard in North Carver at the intersection of 58 and Plymouth Street with the approval of, I believe, the landowner in the corner up there. I think he said, okay, that's the notice I got from Dave.
Perfect.
Please, Mr. Moderator, I think they should arrive early.
Well, this is, we don't, the whole thing right now is, this could fizzle. There could be 150 people show up. And this could end up like Halifax that had 800 show up. And it was in two rooms, and it was, you know, a fiasco really. I mean, there's only one thing on the warrant. I think, oh, there were two articles on the warrant, something about the fishing boat ramp and this. And it was just, it was crazy. So we don't have any idea how this is going to go, whether people have become complacent to this now because it's taken so long to get at the town meeting. It should have been two years ago, in my opinion, but when it was a hot topic, and here we are. But then again, it could be, you could have 800 people show up. So we just don't, we don't have any indication of what's going to happen. So we're preparing for the worst. We did that in April as well, because we had prepared for it because we thought it might hit the warrant in April, and then it didn't.
Correct.
So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Two rooms potentially. Auditorium holds 600. Anyone that is a non-resident in the town of Carver, if we go over the 600, they will be in the auditorium. The non-residents will be delegated to the overflow room.
Very good.
They won't be sitting in a non-resident section like we typically do up in the balcony. We're going to use every bit of space we can.
Thank you.
And I'm really grateful that we have 600 clickers. Happens to be how many the auditorium holds. So that works out really good.
Perfect.
So thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Yeah.
Thanks for everybody being here. I'd like to.
Can you tell us who you are, please?
Excuse me. I'm trying to talk as loud as I can. I'd like to thank everybody for.
You just have to say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say my name. Paulo in Main Street, went through Main Street. I've been watching this MBTA thing from, I think it was the end of June, early July, and everybody on this board has been working real hard on this thing. And to me, with my lying eyes, I've come to the conclusion that there are forces that are being worked against you. Clearly, we should have had information where we could have come to a decision before, a week or two before town meeting. And I think that was purposely put against you as the board to keep it a little in the disarray so that possibly things will get moved to, in favor of people who have plans. As I said to you back in July, if you zone it, they're going to build it. And I think I've heard that already once to me from someone else in this room. So I think that instead of putting it off because we don't have the information that we had, that we need to really make a real educated plan for what the zone unit is going to look like, I think, quite honestly, I think amongst yourselves, you should pick the worst possible one that you prefer, and then vote, you know, have, try to get the people in town to see how bad this is going to be for Carver, and to vote against it at town meeting. Put your time in rallying the troops to ask the people who love Carver, want Carver to be Carver, and not to be Boston, or to end up with a neighborhood like El Gunkin Heights in Plymouth. And so I think you need to roll and put in, put your faith in the voters at town meeting, and make a decision tonight, and just get it over with, rather than going into town meeting and making, you know, a presentation of what you're going to choose at town meeting. I think that would be, I think that would be horrible. And with that, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. I know that, I know what you, you know, how you feel. Everybody here has mentioned what they like, whether they like it or not. And I think you've done a great job considering the crap you've been fed, okay? And our taxes are too damn high.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Aileen Musos. I live on Crystal Lake Drive, and, wait a minute, I can't do two things at once.
That's okay, dear.
At least I admit it.
And like has already been said, that the fact that there's signs around town, that there's all kinds of notice about town meeting next week, I know people in town who know nothing at all about it. Every one of us has the responsibility to tell everybody, whether you know them or not. If you talk to anybody in the town, tell them there's a town meeting next week that's going to have a major impact on their life.
Could you just sit down and speak into the microphone?
That's all I wanted to say. I didn't really need the microphone.
Thank you, Ms. Musos.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
And like has already been said, that the fact that there's signs around town, that there's all kinds of notice about town meeting next week, I know people in town who know nothing at all about it. Every one of us has the responsibility to tell everybody, whether you know them or not, if you talk to anybody in the town, tell them there's a town meeting next week that's going to have a major impact on their life.
Could you just sit down and speak into the mic?
That's all I wanted to say. Didn't really need the microphone.
Thank you, Ms. Musos.
Thank you.
I know I already spoke. I just, Dan, 4N, 20 Brook Street, North Carver. I just want to make a quick plug. We have signs, a sign campaign that's going out. We have 60 signs that are coming on Thursday to try to get this out there. Basically, it says this is what Carver faces. It's a picture of a large condo, obnoxious, ugly looking building, sitting in the middle of a cranberry bog. No to 38 zone, protect our heritage. So 60 signs are coming in on Thursday. We're looking to place those on Friday. I'm pretty sure all 60 of them are already spoken for with people on Facebook, but if people want more than that, maybe we could get our local sign shop that already pulled together these 60 to get some more. So look on the Facebook group for the signs and put your address and we'll do our best to get them out there on Friday.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak tonight? No?
I think you've got your mandate.
Yes.
Actually, I did one more. May I make another comment?
Please do, Mr. Jermaine.
I have to agree with the previous speaker prior to Dan.
If you could just state your name again, Alan, that would be great.
Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine Street, I already signed it. I think that this has been an intentional setup. I think it's been intentionally confusing. I think the board has been kept in the dark. I think this was orchestrated from the get-go for this kind of an outcome. And I couldn't agree with that gentleman more. I think we've been fed a line and then every time we talk about it, the goal changes. The goalposts change. What's going to happen changes. Nothing has been consistent at all. I'm grateful that Representative Gasky came tonight and said what he said. And I got it because I had spoken with the chairman earlier today and she informed me of that. So there's a lot of misconception out here.
There is.
You know, it's not like the world is going to come to an end and the state's going to come in and take us over if we dare say no to Marah Healy. Well, you know what? No. It's that simple. No.
Right.
Come in and lock us up then, if that's what you think you're going to do. Stop dangling the carrot, just say no, and let's keep Carver, Carver. We have enough going on in this town.
I would agree.
I warned you to live in Cambridge. I moved to Cambridge.
Right.
I like Carver.
Right. I agree. Would anyone else like to, from the board, or anyone else in the public? Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Bott?
Just to clarify a couple of things for folks. We do have a website on the town's webpage for the MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw. So everything that we have put together, everything we have put out is posted on the website. So you can go to the town's homepage and it's right on the front page, the MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw. We first started talking about this in December of 2024. And at that point, we had, I had a memo out for the 10th about some areas and a memo out on the 17th by some other areas. We got up to the meeting on the 18th when we were at the deadline for submitting things for town meeting.
Right.
And it's at that point the board opted not to move forward with the zoning bylaw.
I would agree with you because I was one of the people that voiced my opinion and said, we don't need it here.
So that
We don't want.
That memo is on the website as well. And it says, at their December 17th meeting, the planning board voted 2-3-0 and will not be submitting an article to amend the zoning to comply with 48 Section 3A referred to as the MBTA zoning bylaw to create multifamily housing. The language at that time was to see if the town will amend the Carver zoning bylaw and Carver map to create an MBTA community, multifamily overlay district in Carver that would allow for 235 units suitable for families with children by December 2025 of a density of 15 dwelling units per acre with a minimum of 10% affordable.
Now, am I correct in saying that that's the specific language which we are not allowed to put?
No, that's, that's the language that I had proposed.
That was before, right.
That was the language I
But now we can't do that because that's not, that's not legal to do that?
Well, I think it wasn't illegal to do that. It was just
No, I know that you put it forth and it was proposed. I understand that. But we're not able to do that right now, correct?
Well, we could have whatever language we wanted on that, but we had a recommendation to move to something that was a bit, because I had originally talked about in the North Carver area because that's where the master plan identifies those areas for development. So whatever the language, it might have been this and it might have been something else.
Right.
But I just want to note, the remainder of the article, or the remainder of the memo that says, "On the motion of Cornelius Shea, seconded by John Gasky, the planning board voted 2-3-0 and will not be submitting an article for the 2025 town meeting." And while a lot of folks are giving me credit for being the master of whatever, I'm following a process and following the board and doing everything I can to make sure it is as seamless as possible by putting every document, every discussion we've had on our website. So if you want to know what we've talked about and the chronology for it, it's here. And we're here now talking about this because we had a meeting with a representative group, or representatives back in, I think, May about bringing this to a town meeting. So it was a July 1 meeting with the select board. So we had a July 1 meeting with the select board.
Right.
Yeah, we need to move this thing. So we've been moving it since then.
No, I understand. And like I said, I was one of those votes in December to go against putting it, you know, on the warrant. I didn't want to bring it to town meeting. I don't want it in town. I've been very vocal about that. I still remain that way. But we, as a board, have an obligation so as not to jeopardize any of the residents in this town and will set forth an article. Doesn't mean that we have to support that article and allow every, each and every resident that attends the town meeting to vote on it.
But I just want to clarify, there's no deliberate conspiracy theory about this and that. We're following what the boards have decided to do back in December when they decided not to and in July when they decided to.
Well, I mean, that's documented.
To the residents.
But I
This board has made very clear.
That's documented, but I can't attest to conversations that were, private conversations that were had. None of us can at this point, but I know that some statements were made about that.
Yeah, pretty much all my correspondence with Judy's been on email.
I'm not referring to Judy. I'm referring to residents of the town, some conversations that people have referenced to me. But I'm not, that's not, neither here nor there at this point in time. We just want to wrap this up. I feel like we've been duped by Barrett Planning Group. She said one thing. She said one thing and is now doing another, and I'm very frustrated with that. I was told to trust your consultant at one of the meetings, of which I don't trust the consultant because what I, what I thought we could do, we can't. So if we vote for the property that we originally proposed, we run the risk of putting in far greater dwelling units if, in fact, the state is willing to step up to the plate. Oh, let us help, you know, we'll clean up that 21E issue. We'll help you with the sewer. We'll help you with the water. Now, understanding that part of it, I don't want to put forth that much acreage and jeopardize this town and looking at, you know, over 800 units. I would rather keep it a much smaller area and just, you know, squeeze out the 235 and have the residents vote accordingly. Amen.
Well, so our direction to Barrett Planning is 30 to 32 Meadow Street, drop to 250 or less, or look at One Meadowbrook.
3032 West Street.
What did I say? What?
Meadow.
Sorry. 3032 West Street, drop to 250 or less. One Meadowbrook and Spring Street do zoning for both with those parameters that we looked at for a carrying capacity that's much closer to that 235 unit.
We have to get to that number, you know? It's just, it's not fair.
You can't put 250 units on a town hall. That's insane.
Yeah. Have her put it in her program and see what she comes up with and we'll go from there.
Very well. So we do, as I, I texted the board earlier about their availability for a continued hearing on Monday, December, give me a hand. Monday, September
September 6.
October 6. October 6. I knew it was a burr in there. October 6. So Monday, in this room. So we're back here again. I'll be sending Judy Barrett from Planning Group notes from tonight. And I expect
Will she be attending or on Zoom?
I have not gotten the confirmation that they're going to be here, but this is the last show. So I, fingers crossed that she's going to be here.
I'd love to have her.
I won't be able to attend that.
So then we have a problem.
Well, it's a, you've got a form of the board.
Okay.
And the board's recommendation to town meeting is not a super majority or anything like that.
Okay.
It's what's the favor of the board. So 2-2 vote means you didn't recommend it.
Yeah.
A 3-1 vote means you recommended it. A 1-3 vote means you didn't.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I look forward to her participation.
All right. So we have a motion. Would you, we need a motion to continue.
Well, before we continue the public hearing, I have a couple of questions on this, what we were
What are you looking at?
The bylaw. I'm looking at Section 294, 13.6. Part A. It's on page 2.
290, go ahead. What's the section?
4136. It says affordable housing, Section A.
Yep.
Again, I disagree with the language of
The 10%.
Of, right. Well, it should be up, right. So 10 or more dwelling units. But also, I also don't think we should be rounding down. We should be rounding up. Because, you know, if somebody puts in 19 units, that just means one affordable unit. But that's 1.9% would be, for all intensive purposes, two units. And I think we should be rounding up there. And I honestly, I don't think we should be limiting it to 10 or more dwelling units, but that's at the board's pleasure. And the other one
So before you get off
Yeah, sure.
If I may. So right now, what I marked up in the bylaw, it says fractions shall be rounded instead of down up to the next toll number.
Right.
Is that your intent?
That is my intent.
And how's the board feel about that?
I would agree.
So I got one agreeing and one seems sensible. Have I got it?
I agree.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got, you know, the majority. Okay. And what else you got, Con?
The blue, the blue changes you added and no parking shall be within 100 foot of a wetland area. I suppose, I suppose that one's, that one's fine, but no. We also have to protect the 200-foot riverfront, which is a protected area too. And that should be included in both of those. Although Yeah.
It seems kind of open-ended with a no building shall be within 100 feet. What about the services to the buildings?
If you change it, well, it's, the riverfront has a 200-foot setback though. Wetlands just have a 100-foot setback. But if it says no development shall be within the 100-foot wetland area or 200-foot riverfront area, that's kind of what we're supposed to be.
That would encompass the septics or wells or
Right. I would, I would think. Because they're currently not allowed without some sort of variance to concom and we're trying to streamline this process.
Right.
So it's a by right issue. So we shouldn't be stepping on those toes.
Right.
So that would say no building shall be within 100 feet of a wetland or 200 feet from a riparian area?
Yeah, do you want to, it's up to the board. Do you want to leave it as building or development?
Development. No, wait, development, that way it encompasses.
Yeah, I would say development.
Development's good.
I don't want to see parking lots in there either.
Well, we'll plug it into parking as well.
Okay. They're a part of our bylaws as well as state federal regulations. So I think, I think that would be acceptable. Other than that, if the chair's interested, I would continue.
Please do.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Carver zoning bylaw and zoning map to establish MBTA communities multifamily overlay district to October 6, 2025, Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sidillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
Just cleaning up my draft here, so I don't have anything. Be right with you.
So I welcome everyone that has attended this evening to please join us again next Monday night. Town meeting will be Tuesday night. So we appreciate you coming forward, speaking, and please let everyone know, all your friends, family, neighbors. Very important.
Word of mouth is very important. We're hopeful to get 600 people there and that's, that would be a tremendous amount for this town. Rarely do we ever see numbers like that. And that's only 5% of our population, so it's important to spread the word and talk to people.
Yeah. Let's be another Halifax.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Very good. I don't have any further comments. Would you like to? Mr. Bott?
Yes, we have a couple of decisions to sign.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody, for taking your
So the first was actually in your books last week, but I didn't put it on the agenda. I didn't note to mention. So this is the minor modification for special site plan review, do use ground-mounted solar votaic on existing bogs. At their September 16th meeting, the board voted to approve the minor modification. So it's a fairly standard decision. It includes the information that had been previously provided from the applicant. Basically, we sort of pare down the previous decision. So those conditions, project be constructed is approved. The applicant's responsible for operation and maintenance. Any damage to the existing roads will be repaired. The applicant will forward final sets of plans to the planning board and all the conditions of May 28th will be adhered to. And as you recall, that modification, that minor modification was just adding battery energy storage to an existing solar operation.
Okay.
I would like it added in because it was stated by the applicant. On the second page, the second paragraph, the applicant is proposing to add an energy storage system outside of the 100-foot protected area in accordance with recently promulgated emergency regulations.
The applicant is proposing to add an energy storage system
Outside of the 100-foot protected wetland area. I believe they said it was 136 feet. But that's neither here nor there.
All righty. So the applicant is proposing to add an energy storage system outside of the 100-foot wetland protected area in accordance with the recently promulgated regulations. The rest that remains is
Yep. That works for me.
Very good.
All right.
And then on the other one for
So give me just a second.
Sure.
So, so I'm going to print these and bring it back up and sign them.
Okay. So we will sit tight.
Everyone's very excited to hear if the Red Sox came back from being down 1-0 as Savery told me as he was passing through my office earlier. I want you guys to get home and cheer for the Sox, but I also want to get these signed again.
They're up to one of the eights.
Perfect.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
All right. So
What do you mean?
Eight.
Eight.
So application of Mark Hedrickson and Shane Ferrera for a special permit for a two-family dwelling at At the regularly scheduled meeting of the September 23rd, the planning board voted 0-5-0 on the application of Mark Hendrickson and Shane Farrar denying the requested special permit pursuant to Article 5.3 of the Carver zoning bylaw to construct a two-family structure in a residential agricultural district. Project is shown on the plan entitled, I'm not going to read all that stuff because it's sort of cut and paste. Findings, the applicant submitted an application for a special permit for a newly constructed 3,800-square-foot duplex with each unit consisting of two three-bedroom, three-bath units and an adjoining garage on an 84,070 square-foot lot, future storage barn with a 740-square-foot footprint. Site is located at 167 Center Street, residential agricultural district with an existing single-family home to be raised, located 15 to 18 feet from the right-of-way near what was characterized as a dangerous curve. The lot is 84,070 square feet with 181 foot of frontage, where the maximum minimum lot size is 60,000 square feet, and 150 foot of frontage is required. The proposed duplex is shown located with a front yard depth of 139 feet, where 50 foot is required, side yard setbacks of 30 and 54.5 feet, where 30 feet is required, and rear setback of 305 feet, where 50 foot is required. Board opened and closed the public hearing on the 23rd. The applicant spoke about cleaning up the site, piles of water log and wood chips, water logged logs and wood chips, which continue to be dumped on the property following their purchase, moving the driveway further away from the curve to improve site distance, and using a future barn for personal use. Proposed duplex would cover 3.9% of the 80,000-square-foot lots. Fire department comments included the need to widen the driveway to 22 feet and install an FPA 13D fire sprinkler system in the duplexes. The board heard or expressed concerns about a sharp curve in the road, an alleged illegal logging operation across the street at 164 Center Street, a lack of enforcement in the town, the possibility of a future storage barn being used for commercial purposes, and a concern about a protected-use ADU being added in the future that might overcrowd the 84,000-square-foot lot. Following the presentation, the applicant team, the board heard concerns from neighbor Nicole Tully about the logging business operating at 164 Center and enforcement of a potential future business at 167 as well, as Carver resident Bob Bellin about locations of the structure in the driveway. On the motion of Connie Shea, seconded by Ellen Sardillo, to approve, the board's special permit was 0-5-0, which is a denial.
Okay. I might as well just start right at the first paragraph, but the lot size was 76,000, maybe 139 square feet, not 84, 70 is noted in the first paragraph.
Well, actually, that's, because I heard you say that in the meeting, and you said that's what the assessors.
No, I believe I looked it up on MassMapper.
So let's see here.
Well, we might as well get the numbers right because they're all over the place in here.
There we go. 167 Center Street. So the information provided to us in their plan said that lot is 80,000. 84,070 square feet.
And what does the MassGIS or the Assessors Office say?
I do not know because we work off the information that we're given.
Right.
So this is a plan prepared by someone with a stamp, and that's the prime of record.
Well, the record is through the, the Mass, Mass deed of records, and according to the state of Massachusetts, it's a different size than what was proposed.
I did not do deed research. All I can tell you is what was reported to the board, and that's what we basic, you know, what we basic decisions on, the information provided by the applicant.
Well, it was incorrect, and it was stated in the meeting, and it's 76,139 square feet, but we have 84,000, 80,000.
Well, I rounded things off. I could have typed 84,000.
Well, we should do our due diligence and get the numbers for the lot.
So 84,007 square feet is the size of record.
Which was questioned.
Can we add a note to that effect?
I believe we can.
I chose the board's aware of the discrepancy.
I'd rather have the right number than be shown wrong than have the wrong number.
Connie, the Assessors does show 84,070.
Okay. Mass, Massachusetts shows 76.
I just checked the Assessors database, and it shows 1.93 acres, which is exactly that amount.
And one of the things the Assessor, one of the things assessors have typically appreciated about me is when people use Assessor's data, and I've said it 100 times, and I'll say it again, the information in the Assessor's database is used for the purposes of calculating taxation and for no other reason. If you do a study based, and when people come to me, go, I did a study, and I got all this Assessor data, I'm like, well, you're going to have to get better data because the Assessor's data is the Assessor's data for that purpose, and that's why we use the numbers folks give us.
No, I know.
Okay.
The plans generally supersede if the engineer goes out there, but I'm not so sure those plans were.
So do we want to put on an reported? Is reported the word that we want? No, no. Or do we want alleged? I mean, we have a number, that's the number. And I don't, you know, I tend to work off things that I can verify.
Right. Which I figured MassMapper, the GIS system there would be relatively accurate. That's, I didn't go off the assessors because the assessors.
For taxation purposes.
Right.
So every, is, are people comfortable if I say a reported 84, because that's what they reported?
I think that's fair.
That is fair.
What else you got?
Connie Shea should be changed to Cornelius.
Oh.
That was really it.
All right. All right. So the board has voted this, so we'll hit the print key on that. So we've got three plans I'm going, or three decisions I'm going to bring back up in a couple of minutes to sign.
Okay.
Also, I reached out to the applicant for Three Rickets Pond about dates we might be able to meet on site. He basically said, I can have the state's site staked in a couple of days, and at the board's convenience, over the next week or two, he will make himself and his engineer available. So what is the board's pleasure for a site visit to Three Rickets Pond, Lot 4, or Four Rickets Pond, Lot 3? I get confused sometimes. What's, what's the board's pleasure for something that, do you want to go out the day of the hearing? Do you want to set something up prior to?
I'm not attending that.
Yes, we might as well realize, which is why you didn't get the email, by the way.
Yes.
That I sent everybody else.
That's fine.
About this conversation.
That's fine, thank you.
Is anybody available mornings?
I am.
Depends what morning.
What mornings are good for you?
Thursday and Friday mornings.
They're both good with me?
I'm away from this Thursday until Tuesday morning, so.
And you are a voting member on this particular application, sir?
Evening. I might go Thursday morning, I go Thursday morning.
Well, we've not seen them till 20, till the 14th?
Correct.
You're going Thursday then? So a week Thursday or a week Friday?
Right.
Not, right? Is that the week you're away?
I'm away two days from today. I'm leaving on the 2nd.
Right. So if we set it up for eight days or nine days from now?
That would.
Would that work for you?
So Thursday, October 9th is what you're considering?
That, yeah.
That's, that is, Thursday, October 9th is the week before the meeting.
What's that date again? What's that date?
10/9/25.
At what time is good for everybody? 9:00 AM? Or can you make it?
I can make that.
Okay.
10:00 too late? 10 o'clock?
No, it's fine with me. I just throw in our numbers.
Anybody else?
I didn't hear you.
Anybody else, any time?
If I can make it, I can make it. If I can't, I can't, I guess.
Okay. Now?
I can do that.
Okay.
9 o'clock?
Yeah. 10/9 at 9.
All right. Give me just a second. Mr. Print.
Are we going at 9 or 10?
9.
Okay. So October 9th, 9:00 AM?
Yep.
Rickets Pond. And that is all I have. We will note that we are meeting in a week. It's not on the future meetings because we didn't, we sort of anticipated, but I don't put anything until it's been decided. And if there's good news about our meeting schedule, as of this morning, we don't have anything that requires the board to meet immediately in November. So we had talked about how we have our November meeting date. We had Veterans Day in there, so we may not have a need to meet on November 4th or the 11th. It may be November 18th before we meet, so.
Okay.
Much as I love seeing you guys, I'd be fine if we met less often in November.
Agreed.
Okay. I don't take that personally at all. Because, you know, I don't take anything personal. If you do, you can't be in this business.
And do we have minutes?
I don't know. Do we have minutes?
Yes.
Is there a 40B development in the town of Carver? I am unaware of one.
I think there was some affordable developments, but I think it was prior to.
Right. Because it's been, I mean, it's relatively accurate, but it says, it's been 20 years since the last 40B development was built, mostly because developers weren't interested because of the lack of public water isn't exactly an accurate statement, but it's not inaccurate enough to worry over.
I, I didn't say that.
Hmm?
I said, I didn't say that.
No, it says, I said it. Sure, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Well, there's also no North Street either. Oh, I think what she was referring to, it's the Plimpton.
Okay.
At the bottom.
Peach Street?
Right around the, right around the Peach Street, but I was referring to Plimpton property, not Carver. Yeah. Mr. Bott, I do notice something on these minutes. I don't know if you're ready for that yet or not, but.
Did you get your names spelled right?
No, no. It's the last paragraph on page 2.
Page 2?
There is no North Street. Ms. Barrett indicates parcels on North Street.
That must mean North Main Street.
Likely North Main?
Yeah.
So what line does it say North Street on? I see North Main Street on the second line.
Last paragraph, I have first sentence, Ms. Barrett indicates parcels on.
Oh, the last, okay, last paragraph.
Yeah, North Street.
Likely North Main.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll check that from the chief just a minute.
I was somewhat misquoted on the last page, but I don't have a problem with what she said I said.
We can fix that.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Is it better than what you originally said?
Well, it was in line with what I said.
Right, right.
But it's not what I said.
It was paraphrased.
All right. So with those modifications of what she said is fine?
It's fine.
Because I had to work what she said in there somehow.
I have no problem with that.
And adding Main to the second page, anything else on the minutes?
I'm okay with the minutes.
Okay.
I approve the minutes of August 5, 2025.
Second that.
Second that. Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And with that, I just got goodies for you guys to sign.
All right.
Two decisions on the table and.
Very good. So getting a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And.
Thank you. Go ahead.
No.
Power pen.